It's 5:30, time to call our meeting to order for Monday, July the 9th. Carl, roll call please. Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hanson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonis.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Mayor Leeson.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we need a motion to approve last week's meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion, Johnson, second by Bunsonis. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Nobody signed up for open forum? Okay. Just one item on the consent calendar, request for street use near Malchows. We need a motion to approve that.
Move.
Second.
Motion, Remley, second by Ronain. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under new business, we have two resolutions offered tonight for annexation of property. The first is 1807-01. Brett?
This is at 115 Brown County 19. It's approximately 1.98 acres, requesting to annex for commercial development. Staff recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Johnson, second by Remley. Any questions on this one? All in favor of approving that annexation then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next one, Brett, is 1807-02.
This property is located west of Willowood subdivision, or excuse me, east of Willowood subdivision, and they're requesting annex in 58.5 acres for residential development. Staff recommends approval.
Moved.
Motion.
Motion, Olson, second by Bunsonis. Questions on this one? All in favor of approving the annexation then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. This is the appointed time for hearing on one day, on sale liquor licenses on July the 12th, August the 9th, August 24th, and August 25th for downtown association events. No one here to speak in opposition, so we need to entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
Second.
Motion, Remley, second by Lunsman. Questions on it? All in favor of approving those applications then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item D, also a liquor license hearing. This application is for a new retail on-off sale beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for natural abundance food cooperative. And also, no one opposing that, so we need a motion to approve that.
Moved.
Second.
Motion, Ronain, second by Remley. Questions? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item F, a 2018 budget supplement request for the library. Lynn.
Okay, I'll start out and give kind of a history behind this, so everyone has a better understanding of where we're at today. On November 27, 2017, the city council actually passed a motion that the city council recommended that the library board of trustees consider expanding operational hours into Sunday. That was sent to the board of trustees, and the board of trustees knew that they were going to do a strategic plan retreat and come up with plans for the future within that retreat, so recently, they sent back a copy of their minutes, which, this was the meeting of June 5, 2018, and it said, "The board discussed strategic plan, goal of exploring options for adding afternoon hours on Sundays, and decided that to add open hours on Sundays, extra staffing would be necessary." The board asked that Shirley Director to request city officials to look at the attached proposal for adding a new full-time staff member and expanding part-time staff hours to make it feasible for the library to be open on Sundays. So what we did is Shirley brought over her request and told us what she, what they meant specifically by a full-time position and part-time positions, and we did calculations for you showing their request, which they have titled as Plan One. And so from that point, I guess to better understand the feelings of the board, it might be necessary for them to explain their thought process with this Plan Number One.
Do one of you want to do that?
I'm the library director, I'm not a board member, but one of them will speak. I, um, we've just, with the strategic plan, we had people out of Minnesota come and do a strategic plan, and we met with the community on an occasion. We did a survey of the community, and what we found is the community does not want us to cut hours. One of the things we looked at was cutting hours and opening on Sundays. They don't want us to cut hours, they want us to add hours. And I feel like, myself, the staff, and the board, after looking at everything we're doing, and that the strategic plan wants us to have more programming and do more out in the community, that the only way we could achieve this would be to add some staff. And so that is what we looked at, and that is what the board decided to ask for. And they can speak to their opinions, I can't speak to the reason they voted that way, but you have questions for them or me?
I guess I would, I would actually have a question for Lynn. Typically, if we're going to add a full-time position, that is a budget item that you either submit or don't. And, you know, I wonder where we are. I'm not sure these two things are connected, is my question of Sunday hours connected with an additional FTE there. I think they should be handled separately.
Typically, you pass a number of staff positions through ordinance. So you're right, you, if in fact you wanted to add a full-time position, you would have to approve an ordinance adding additional position.
Well, go ahead, Mr. President.
Is your, is your question whether we should be approving an additional individual? Because, you know, through the budget process, people bring to you, asking for additional people, and we don't even see those requests. And now, tonight, we see a request for an additional person. So my, my question is, should we be doing this at this point, or is this a budget discussion? You know, so the police came to you and asked for two additional officers, and you, you applied for a grant to get those paid for, but we never had the opportunity to say yes or no to those two officers. So isn't that kind of the same thing here, where you would make the decision?
Well, you have two different issues. Actually, you have 2019, which is an issue, which would, and then you have if in fact you wanted immediate for 2018. You're right, typically, within an annual budget, I present it within September. And so to do immediate 2018 would require a budget amendment, and that goes beyond my recommendation and authority.
You know, I do have a question, if I could, for Shirley. This is Plan One, is there a Plan Two?
No, I believe, this is what we showed you back in November, there were three options, I believe, and this is the option out of those three that the board chose. The other options were either to, let's see, to pay overtime to another full-time person to do the hours, and, or try to cut hours one place so we could be open on Sundays. Those were the three options. And the board, when it went back to them, picked this was option one at that point in time, and that's why it's option one. I don't believe they had another option at this point.
Okay. You know, for myself, I, I, if I can read into the mayor's question, I agree entirely. I think the question of a full-time library technician is one I would like to see go through the normal channels, where the, where the manager is part of the budgeting process, either recommends it or doesn't. But I am very supportive of supplementing their budget to add, whether it's four or, four or five part-time employees to supplement their budget, a few thousand dollars, so they can open up during the fourth quarter. I, I think the community is, has been very clear that that is a priority for this community, and I would support doing that, but I, but I think these are separate issues.
Can I ask a question of Rob? So you're in favor of the supplement for just the part-time people, not the full-time person?
Correct.
Jennifer, your turn.
I feel the same way. I, I don't quite understand, and I, nothing that I'm seeing in the paperwork that we receive justifies a full-time person. So I'm trying to figure out what that person's going to do the other 36 hours of the week, or 35 hours, I guess you said they have a prep hour. I guess maybe the board can explain to us why they think they need somebody the other 35 hours of the week, why you can't just do something on Sunday with part-time staff that are already in place.
My understanding is just, what do I have to people?
The way Brookings handles it, and not that Brookings does things right, and we should follow that, the way they handle it is they have their full-time people take turns handling it on Sunday, and on a Sun, and on the weeks where they are doing that on Sunday, they take that as comp time during the week, take some of the things that they could be doing at their desk during the week, and just postpone them and do those during the hours that they are supervising the part-time people on Sunday. So Brookings total accrued cost to adding 48 Sundays was under $9,000.
Well, and I think that's what Shirley, that's, at least that's, back when I was involved in the library, that's what you did on Saturdays, I think.
We have a full-time staff person, we have circulation staff, there are four people who take turns doing the Sundays, and then they have part-time staff that they supervise around Saturdays. That's what they do all day Saturday.
Question, you said there was three options, and you provided that to us? Because I don't remember that being ever provided to us. I'm not sure, you know, I remember the mayor, when we started this, saying that he's talked to every mayor in the state, not every mayor, but pretty close to every mayor, of the, the big communities, and this wasn't going to cost more than the seven to nine thousand dollars, and now we're into much greater amount. I made favor of opening Sunday, Sunday hours, but I think we need to find another option. And I'm not sure I'm willing to, well, you know, if, if we wanted to approve the four part-time staff tonight, but the full-time position needs to go through the budget process. I think we have, if we're going to make these decisions, we need to make the decisions on all other employee adds, and so we can prioritize what, you know, where are we going in this community? So I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. So if, if someone wants to, you know, ask for the, the part-time individuals, but that, I would assume, kind of throws your plan off. Because you have no one that wants to work Sunday. That's probably...
Right now, I don't.
Yeah, that's probably the issue. So I guess I would, I would ask that we push this off to budget discussions.
I would, I would point out, you know, there may be a complete justification for another full-time person at the library. And we've got a big new library, we want to do all kinds of more things, that's an argument that can be made, but I think it's a separate argument from, totally separate argument from being open on Sunday. And, and should be treated separately, so that we can make a decision separately.
I can believe it, too. I would, I would have liked to have seen that in what we were presented today. I think that would have made it really easy for us. I know that the, I think the support is out there in the community for this. I know I got two tweets tonight on my way to the meeting from people saying, "Support this tonight, Jennifer, get this done." And so I, I think the support is out there in the community for us to have the library open on Sundays. I think they want to see it, but I didn't see something in what we were presented tonight to justify a decision for a full-time staff, an additional full-time staffer going forward, so I won't be able to support it.
So lacking a motion, council members, what would you like to do? Ask the board to go back and, and find a way to deal with the Sunday opening separately?
I guess I, I would like to see, see the strategic plan, or the, the information that you received, because you said that people don't want hours cut, so I'd like to see that information. I'd like to see the three options that I guess they're out there. I think all of us should have that information if we're going to make informed decisions.
Just to give you an idea of what you can do next, Shirley?
Sure.
Okay.
Is that okay?
And the board?
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Okay. And, and again, if there's, if you can make a case for another full-time employee, this should not be in any way taken as dismissive or negative of that, just separate.
Okay.
Okay.
That it?
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the payment for a permanent easement to Trevor Lean for West Waterloop Project. Robin?
As you're aware, we're doing that mile of transmission line on the bypass, and as a result of that, we're, the embankment for that bypass bridge area is, it's all dirt, and so we're going to have to get outside of the normal right-of-way in order to construct this. Otherwise, the water remains under, you know, 10, 12 feet of dirt instead of the normal six or seven. So it makes it a lot less easy to maintain. So we're going to be out in private property for this in order to construct it, and so this property owner is requesting some compensation. It's very reasonable, and it's in the normal range of what we've paid in the past.
Move.
Second.
Motion, Bunsonis, second by Olson. Questions or comments, anyone? This is a payment request. Carl, so we need a vote.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. And back to Robin, Accessible Quadrum Improvements Project, a change order and payment request. Rob?
Okay, you've got a change order request in the amount of $33,163, and a payment request in the amount of $63,711. The reason for the change order seems like an unusual deal, we'd be asking for a change order, but really, we ended up, we bid this with the intention of making sure we can stay within budget. We have much more budgeted, we want to maximize the amount of these that we can do. That's the whole point, is to get these done throughout the community. So we're asking for the additional change order, and the payment request is just for the work they've done.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Bunsonis, and second by Olson. Any questions? Carl?
Councilmember Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. And item I is a payment to Sharp Enterprises for the Third Avenue Street work. Robin?
The work on Third Avenue, as, as you're probably aware, having gone by, we've got the paving that is westbound completed, they're trying to do the tie-ins with all of that. This one was done a little bit differently because of the amount of trees and stuff in the area, they had to actually do the, the slab separate from the curb and gutter, which is not the way we typically would do it, but it's how they have to do it in order to get through this construction process. This payment request is for that, basically for the westbound portion, they will be doing the eastbound portion, I would guess, within the next week or so, or start that process. So we recommend approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Johnson, second by Slate Hanson, to pay the amount of $253,758 to Sharp Enterprises. Any questions? Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Item K is payroll June 24 to July 7, and City Sheriff's Social Security, old age and survivors, insurance, retirement, health and life.
Moved. Second.
Motion, Ronain, second by Remley. Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Item K is payroll June 24 to July 7, and City Sheriff's Social Security, old age and survivors, insurance, retirement, health and life.
Moved. Second.
Motion, Ronain, second by Remley. Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Lynn, city manager report.
We have one item this evening, our transportation director and his assistant are here this evening to give a PowerPoint presentation on RideLine, in addition, the concept of rural transportation realization. So the floor is yours, Cody.
All right, thank you, Lynn. We were just talking to Austin out in the hallway to try to log in, to show you this presentation. I'm here way too often talking to you guys, so I think you all know who I am. This is Tom Wanty, he's the RideLine manager that reports to me and oversees the daily operation there at RideLine. He's going to come here and help me with this presentation tonight. He also oversees the complaint line, and I handle the compliment line over there at RideLine. So, um, yeah. Try to get this pulled up here.
Play Minecraft instead.
Why was that on the favorites?
On a CD computer.
Okay. So the reason we're before you here tonight, I wanted to give a background on the RideLine transit operation, what it is that we do, our history, how we've evolved through time, and then introduce a new concept, just for council members to think about as far as the future of, of RideLine and where we go from here. The organization, as far as a transit agency started, for elderly transportation in Aberdeen in 1968, that's just a couple of years before I was around. And as you can see on the timeline there, it's evolved. The city took over the RideLine Transit Organization in 1999, and operated it for a couple of years as part of the senior center, and after that, we transitioned into our own department. I believe it was, go ahead, the next slide, around 2001, that timeframe where the, the airports and, and RideLine were combined into, 2001, 2003, combined into the transportation department as it sits now. In 2005, we had a major milestone on utilizing the software that we still utilize today, that being Shaw software, which is a specialized transit software. I bring that to your attention, one, it's, it's a major cost for us each year, but we do recognize a lot of efficiencies in our operation because of the abilities of this software, but it's also something that hasn't been incorporated at other, more rural transit agencies in our region of the state. So it puts us at an advantage as far as how our operation goes with that software. There was an addition done to the facility that we're in now, in 2009. I came around in 2014, and Tom joined the team in 2015. The RideLine operations, I'll let Tom kind of discuss this with you guys, as far as what our operations look like today.
Our normal hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. We are a demand response system, in other words, riders have to schedule a ride by 4:00 the day before they need the ride. We offer a curb-to-curb service, in other words, we pick you up at the curb, and we drop you back off at the curb. We don't wheel them into medical facilities or anything like that. Over half of our fleet is equipped with lifts for people that are, are having difficulties getting up and downstairs, whether they be in a wheelchair, use a walker, anything like that. Like Cody said, we have utilized that Shaw software, which is that specialized transit software, since 2005 for the ride coordination. We upgraded in 2017. Part of that software now is used to manually, or to, excuse me, not manually, but automatically route our rides, which makes it a lot easier. It used to take our dispatchers three to four hours a day to do the routing. A lot of it now is, is just automatic. You push a button, a couple of series of buttons, and it, it does all the routing for us. Our current service area is a two-and-a-half mile radius to the city of Aberdeen. We offer a Summit to Jefferson Lines connection. Basically, twice a day, we're running, five days a week, to Summit, and they can connect with the Jefferson bus lines, basically, which allows them to travel anywhere in the United States that the big buses run, and down also into Mexico. We have the Taxi Cab After Hours program, which is designed for elderly or disabled people, that if they need transportation outside of our normal operating hours, they can buy a discounted ticket from RideLine and utilize the, the taxi cabs for that transportation. Brown County Fair participation, the last two years, we've been partnered with the Brown County Fair in offering transportation to and from the fair. Hopefully, it's, it's keeping some of the people that have indulged a little bit too much off of the roads, making it a little safer for everybody else to be out on the roads.
Does your business spend down, Lynn, chief?
Okay, talk about some of the recent improvements that we've done to, to RideLine. In 2015, we installed a new ADA ramp with railing. We used labor from the 3M through United Way partnership to get that project done. We purchased new iPads and cradles for the buses, which allows our drivers to see exactly what routes they have, who they're picking up, who they're dropping off, where they are being picked up and dropped off at. In 2015, we did purchase three new buses, 10 plus 2, the plus 2 is the number of wheelchair spaces are in each of those buses, and then we had a 14-2 and a 14-3 cutaway bus also in that same year. In 2016, we installed new irrigation system, new landscaping, making the, the outside of the building looking a lot nicer. Inside of the building, we installed new flooring, painted all the interiors of all the office space, again, utilizing some free labor. DEA Champions, again, another United Way program. And then we also purchased an additional 16 plus 3 cutaway bus. Each time we're, we're adding new buses, we're trying to increase the capacity of the buses, just so that we can transport more people. 2017, we purchased new tablets and Wi-Fi hotspots for the bus, again, with some of the technology. Things are changing, we're, we're trying to upgrade the tablets to, you know, looking forward in, in some of the things that we're looking to do. Down the road, we're looking at the possibility of using a fare card for paying for the rides, rather than having to utilize cash all the time. And then, like I said, we use that, or we purchase the Shaw optimization software, which is that automatic routing software that we're using now. Upcoming, in 2018, we're planning on resealing the garage floor and the roof of the facility, replacing heat tape in the eaves troughs so that we don't get the, the ice dams on the roof. We're looking at purchasing a portable hoist system and jack. Right now, we have a fixed hoist in the, in the building. Some of our buses will not fit on that to be worked on properly, so it's, it gets to be a, a dangerous situation for our mechanic. The portable system, we can use that anywhere in the building and lift the bus right where it sits, so makes it a lot easier. Looking at purchasing an upgradable scanning tool, the one that we have now is no longer upgradable, so any of the newer buses, we can't use our, our current scan tool for. Replacing the oil burner that's in the shop and installing two fans to help efficiency on the, on the heating of the shop building. We do use a, a used oil burner, so rather than paying for liquid propane or anything like that, we, we run around and pick up used oil anywhere, we can get our hands on it to, to heat the shop. In 2019, we're looking at repairing the parking lot in the driveway. We're seeing bigger vehicles driving on the, on the driveway, is causing the, the driveway of the parking lot to start to crumble pretty bad. All the... to crumble pretty bad. All the fire trucks, the ambulances, garbage trucks use our facility for fueling, so the trucks seem to be getting larger and larger all the time and therefore it's causing a little bit of maintenance requirement there. Hoping to purchase three new buses. We're looking at a 30 passenger bus, a 14 plus 2, and a 16 plus 2 cutaway. And then the last of the anticipated improvements we're looking at is purchasing and installing camera systems in the buses and the buildings, obviously security reasons. And if, heaven forbid, something happens on one of the buses, we would have documentation that would help us out.
You have no cameras right now?
Not right now.
On those items as well on this slide, I just want to point out to councilors, these are anticipated improvements. We received correspondence from the state about eight business days ago that they anticipate this to be funded between the state and fed partnership. We have not received the grant offer on these, but this is what we expect to get assistance for moving forward. What does this mean for Aberdeen RideLine? I just wanted to do a snapshot of the fleet. In 2014, our fleet, all of it was five years, at least five years old. 2009 was our newest bus in the fleet in 2014. By the end of next year, anticipating that funding assistance that we're hoping to get, nearly half of our fleet will have replaced in the last four years. So, you know, Tom mentioned some of the advantages of that. The main thing is it puts us in what the state considers as a state of good repair as far as our fleet goes, or moving towards that at least. We had a lot of buses in the fleet that were had excessive miles, excessive wear and tear, and it's just a continuous struggle to keep those buses up and running and on the road with the one mechanic that we have. Some of the strengths, I just, Tom and I went through where we sit today as far as our strengths as an agency, and we listed some of those there. Particularly, I'd like to highlight, you know, our in-house maintenance capabilities. I would say are second to none in the North Dakota/South Dakota region. I like to joke that our mechanic has been twisting wrenches since he's been, you know, this tall, and he's phenomenal at what he does. We have improved our performance on our state triennial review. This is a process we just wrapped up a few weeks ago. We did it in 2015 and again in 2018, and we have one of the best performance records now in the state of South Dakota as far as looking at the state reviewing every aspect of our operation. And we couldn't do what we do or have that great performance without all the assistance that we get from the different city departments being a part of the city of Aberdeen.
It's like you almost listed all of them.
Just to cover the bases. I forgot city council on there, sorry. Weaknesses, as far as our current facility goes, there are some operational restrictions we would have if we were to continue to grow office space. We don't have a premium of office space. When I work at RideLine, I'm in Tom's office, so he can't get rid of me when I am over there, because I work at the end of his desk. And then limited growth opportunities with the two and a half mile radius of the city of Aberdeen outside of that Jefferson connection that Tom mentioned. And then I think this is something that, talking to a lot of employers in Aberdeen, they realize part-time staff retention. I know Shirley was talking about part-time staff. It's getting better for us. We seem to have found a niche, you know, not that we look for a certain demographic when we're hiring, it's, we're EEO, but there's a lot of retired folks that we've hired on that have been very reliable, really enjoy what they're doing and really enjoy delivering the rides to our passengers and socializing with them too, so. Opportunities, again, potential expansion of fleet if we were to look at a regional partnership, and then potential for expanded partnerships within the city. Right now, we're a little bit limited with this as far as what we can expand in offerings to some of the agencies in town, just because we're pretty much capped where we're at as far as our fleet goes. We have 15 buses in our fleet currently and there's times where we have them all on the road at the same time, everything that's operating, not on the maintenance rack that is, so. Threats, we recently found out that Volunteers for America won't be continuing their operation in Aberdeen. Part of that is the Foster Grandparents and RSVP. Those are two programs that utilize or did utilize RideLine quite extensively for getting their volunteers around the community to provide those different services. Lynn mentioned regionalization, so this is kind of why we're here tonight. We have had initial conversations with South Dakota DOT, and I've been working with Lynn in his office discussing this concept on what is regionalization and where do they potentially see RideLine in that mix. Lynn provided you pros and cons worksheet that we had worked on together. We highlighted four different concepts within that worksheet on potential approaches we see we could take as an organization. And I'll gladly answer any questions you guys have on that one when we're done. But this is, in a general sense, why the state is looking at this. They've been successful doing this in other parts of the state. The Black Hills region for rural transit has run out of Spearfish from pretty much the entirety of the Black Hills from the North Dakota border down to the Wyoming/Nebraska border area. Pier runs most of the center part of the state north to south and runs a very successful operation centralized in Pier. And they're looking at the cost savings that they've recognized for the entirety of the state in regionalizing those two areas, and they want to continue possibly doing that in the northeastern corridor of the state. They've found better customer service, they've had improved facilities and bus fleets, and they're keeping up these agencies in the small communities with the compliance on the grants and administrative requirements of running a rural transit organization through the state that they weren't able to do in the past as a single, singular transit agency in their own small community. How would a partnership save costs for the overall rural transit organization? A lot of the things you'll see we highlighted on that worksheet for you is looking at a centralized concept. So rather than rural communities around us all having to do the, not just the grant paperwork and all the reporting that goes with it that we handle, they also do their maintenance or they have to coordinate to have it shopped out at a dealership, which typically comes with a higher cost for them than we can do it for. Their dispatch, they're running their own dispatch, which is typically somebody in a bus pulling over to answer the phone to figure out where they're going next. And then their scheduling is a similar concept on how they're doing it in rural communities. And then improved efficiency of ride delivery through technology. I mentioned earlier, the rural agencies in the northeastern part of the state do not utilize the same software that we have. They are still running on pencil and paper and tracking all of their information through that. We are quite advanced, I would say, as far as the state goes in our implementation of technology. In fact, Tom has assisted a lot of other agencies in advances they've made with their technology and helping them get that off the ground. So he's a resource that numerous other agencies turn to.
How would regionalization benefit Aberdeen? There's potential for increased traffic to the city through greater connectivity with rural communities of northeast South Dakota. We've got a potential to maintain and possibly expand rural transit northeast South Dakota with the center of operation being in Aberdeen, and we're ensuring that Aberdeen continues to be in an advantageous position to receive adequate state and federal funding.
Here I provided just a breakdown on ridership for us over the last three years, averaging just over 72,000 a year. Comparatively speaking, looking at our closest neighbors as far as rural transit agencies go, Groton Area Transit averaging 8,600 and change, and then Spink County, which has run out of Redfield, averaging 21,535. Cost comparison of ourselves and these two closest agencies, you can see a cost per mile as far as ride delivery. Ours is at 364 per mile and they're at 642 and 548.
Big difference.
The reason that we put the Spink County and Groton on there, I just wanted to have those comparatives, you know, for the localized, our closest transit agencies. I also wanted to give you guys this information for your consideration and get your feedback if you have any questions tonight. And what we're doing right now with the state is we're gathering more information as far as financials. We want to, if we're considering any change in how our organization is geographically, keep that a cost neutral situation for the city if it's a city entity, so.
I'm curious Cody, you know, Pierce had this for a long time, I don't know how long in Black Hills, and we haven't in Sioux Falls. What's, why haven't we when they did it? And what's changed that now we're in the picture?
Boy, that's a tough one there. I think that the state, you know, to me, there's a reason that we're making all these improvements at our local agency over the last few years. And we've established a really good working relationship with the transit office at the state in doing that. You know, not having a new bus for five plus years when I got here, we were way behind the eight ball. So we're really trying to catch up and we've been successful in doing that. And I think that they are very comfortable in at least having initial conversations with the management and how our organization is and the improvements they've seen here to say, hey, we think you can implement this in a bigger geographic area potentially.
So it wasn't as if those other two areas made extra contributions locally?
There's a lot of differences in the concepts that I presented in the breakdown of no regionalization, regionalization as city, or a regionalization as a separate entity or a management contract. And there's some advantages to some of those and not others I foresee if we are to keep it a cost neutral situation for the city of Aberdeen.
When you talk about northeast South Dakota, what area are you talking about? You provided a map.
Mm-hmm.
And what would we, if we were to go with the city management style, what area are we taking over?
That's yet to be determined, because I'm here before you tonight, before, you know, getting the information to you, gathering feedback, before we even talk to any other agencies. I will tell you that a few months ago, we had all of the transit directors across the state in a room, and we did, went through an exercise with the state officials on where the everyone, we broke apart into teams and where does everyone see this going. Our area of the state, you know, there was concepts of keeping it just in Aberdeen all the way to going from the river to North Dakota and, or excuse me, the river to the Minnesota border, and then North Dakota down to the Huron area. So, and anything in between.
Right.
You know, there were six groups and it was kind of all across the board.
Jennifer, you got it.
Well, I'm wondering, I'm not clear if this is a top-down situation where Pier, where Pier is proposing this and kind of pushing it down, or whether this is the other communities are looking towards Aberdeen and saying, boy, you're doing a really good job. Will you come help us?
I don't want to say that it's being pushed by anybody.
Okay.
It's not, and the state understands that this is a local decision first and foremost. We are a city entity. And as I mentioned, you know, looking at those resources that we have access to and are able to utilize on a daily basis in managing our transit association, that would be a very big struggle for us if we didn't have that, if we weren't part of the city. I'll be quite honest with you there. And that puts us at an advantage to some agencies that aren't part of a city around the state as well. But I, it's not being pushed by the state. Would they like to see it? Sure, because we can make our state dollars go further is what everybody hypothetically thinks we could do, because they've seen it done in other locations.
David?
One of the questions, what is the temperature with these other organizations like Spink County and Groton? What's their thought?
As I mentioned, we did have a meeting of all transit agencies across the state and, you know, initial conversations with management to those two areas. Nothing negative. We didn't receive any negative feedback, but I don't want to go to those other agencies or their boards, you know, and sit in a room like this if I haven't. It wouldn't be right to first running it through Lynn and then discussing it with you guys and making sure that we're going in the direction that the Aberdeen City Council wants to go first and foremost.
I just want to say, I'm impressed with the information that you put out, and I'm impressed with your presentation tonight. And I think we need to pursue the city entity option of regionalization and see where we can go. I wouldn't want this to go to a nonprofit because I think you guys would leave us and start the nonprofit and do well. But, just kidding.
I don't want to leave.
We got that on the table. So I believe we should, we should go in that direction. I can see a lot of benefit, not only for Aberdeen, but for this region.
Lynn and I discussed this before we came down tonight too, and we got a lot of information thrown at us from a lot of different directions, and we tried our best to organize that for you guys tonight. But what we discussed was going back and looking at the financial information that we can get our hands on for the agencies around us before we're looking at what direction we want to go for sure moving forward. So we'll come back to you in the future, I guess.
You know, this has been discussed a lot in the past, and it's always been looked on as a really positive thing and something we should look at or something we should do, but there was always some, a reason not to. And what it needs now is people like the two of you who will approach this, not to be discouraged by reasons not to, but to overcome them, which in the past, we just haven't. I don't know if we haven't had the enthusiasm for it, or if there've been real roadblocks that, but probably something that should have been done a long time ago.
We have the right leadership now. Let's go with that.
For what, and I'm not blaming, and Dave isn't either blaming anybody, but just for whatever reason, it just didn't happen before, and we'd all, many of us had looked with admiration on how well it's worked in Pier. And that'd be great if we could make that work here.
Try our best. Thank you. Any other questions?
So if one of the council members indicates support for the regionalized city entity model, do you know if Spearfish or Pier, do you know what their models are?
They are both nonprofit agencies.
Okay.
The other city entity in the state that is a rural transit program is in Mitchell, and they cover a little bit outside of Mitchell, a little bit further than what we do here in Aberdeen, but not a whole lot.
Because I'm wondering if that's the direction that the council would like Cody to go, then I think I need to get on my side and start looking at what kind of agreements, what kind of documents need to be in place so that when you're coming to talk to these other cities, you've got something that you can actually show them. So I just needed to know if that's the direction you folks want to go.
That would be great after we get done looking at the financials.
I said pursue the idea, not do it.
Because one of them is a county and one of them...
Right. One of the organizations that you mentioned was a county organization, one is a city, so.
Well, it's called Spink County. It's not run by the county.
Oh, it's not? Is it run by a nonprofit? What's it run by?
Yes.
Oh, it is?
Oh, it is. Jennifer, you don't want to ask any more questions, because I'm still scratching my head trying to figure out who's in charge down there too.
All right, well.
Well, I'm sure you'll find out after that, because it's in the paper tomorrow morning.
So Ron, were you looking for direction from other council members if they were in agreement?
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, because if, because I can see that there probably needs to be significant amount of work done on the front end too. I mean, I want to know how much I should get involved in that.
I don't, I don't think there's any sentiment. I don't think there's any sentiment for a departure from, to a nonprofit, there's no justification for that at all, so.
I support pursuing it. I think that it's, I think that it's a great, great opportunity for our community.
We've been working with this information now for about four months, and so we wanted to bring it forward to you, so we put you in the loop, and we thought that there, when information we received justified to continue, it's to see if and set if we could improve the program.
And be a leader versus a follower?
Super.
There are other communities in the region as well that have, I can't remember what I saw on the side of a van the other day here in town, if it said Falk County Transportation or something, but are there other, others that are, besides the two that you named, are there others out there that are part of the, oh, they are?
Yep.
Okay.
So that map that Lynn's showing you there, I apologize for my chicken scratch on a couple of the agencies out there to the west, but, you know, Prairie Hills Transit based out of Spearfish, as you can see, for the footprint on that map was very large, and they just recently announced that they will be merging with the northwestern part of the state, I believe it was Run Out of Lemon. And so, like I said, they'll essentially have from the North Dakota/South Dakota border all the way to the south end of the state on the hillside of the state.
So community transit, where are they out of?
Sistin.
So they do a wide area. That might be something that you're seeing.
Yep. Yeah, you'll see a lot of the cities surrounding Aberdeen are covered by community transit.
Anything more, Lynn?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody?
I just want to say that I went across two, one road and one overpass in the last week and was impressed with the rideability, so, great job.
Is that Eighth Avenue?
Eighth Avenue Northwest and the overpass.
I drove Eighth Avenue, too, but I didn't want to cut in on your scan.
How fast were you going on Eighth Avenue? That's smoother.
Twenty-five or thirty.
No, really nice job. Thanks.
Anyone else? We need a motion then.
Move. Second.
Motion, slate hands, and second by Ron, named to a journal, in favor, say aye.
Aye.